And thank you, Mrs. Orr. I see a picture of the flag on your profile, so we can all use that. I will call the meeting of Monday, March 23rd, 6:00 PM via Zoom. Following at Northeast Intermediate School, removal of debris, storage room abatement, and additional work to gain access to the auditorium, and a personnel matter. I call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Liberty and justice for all. Okay. So can everyone hear me? Because I muted everyone. So if the board members would please unmute themselves, because I can't seem to find everybody's name. And then we can start with the roll call.
Thank you. That also seems to be bringing everyone to the same screen, which is great. So yes, roll call, please.
Okay. Ms. Cruz?
Here, present.
Ms. Fox? Catherine? I'll unmute her.
Present.
Okay.
Sorry.
It's okay. Ms. Hugh?
Present.
Mr. Malloy?
Present, although I think I'm described in this video picture as George, which is my son's name, of course.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. McCandrew?
Present.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Ms. Welby?
Present.
Mrs. Yanni?
Present.
Ms. Good Martin?
Present.
Nine present, zero absent. Okay, we have Matt Barrett is the only public speaker.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Barrett, I just don't know how to unmute you. Can you unmute yourself?
Can you hear me?
Yep. Okay, we got you.
Okay, thank you. To all the board members, thanks for your service on the board. I have a couple of questions. Dr. Finan, in the reports that were prepared last year by PFM and then ultimately incorporated into your report, your recovery report, there's a reference to the fact that the roof at Northeast needed some repair. Is there any effort to undertake the extent of repair? And when can they expect any work to begin on the roof, if necessary?
You're correct. That is in the report. There was, that was part of the study that was done in 2012. We have not moved on doing anything with the roof. There is another, there are some other roof issues in the district, one being West Granton Intermediate School. And there's some roof repairs needed at South Scranton Intermediate School. The decision would be, when we do roofing, we would look at that whole, all those roofs as one project. We have not discussed that of this date.
How about with regards to, in the PFM report, in your report, there's a reference to the HVAC system and a redo of the HVAC system at Northeast. Has that been undertaken? Have any bids been gotten? Or have you done any research to determine the extent of that work needed?
Oh, no. No, no, no. We have not, we have not done any of that yet.
How about with regards to your recovery plan? I know you called for the closing of some elementary schools. And in January, you announced that you were not going to be pursuing that in the 2021 school year. At that point, you had indicated that you were considering possibly moving to two intermediate schools instead of three. This is in the newspaper article from the Scranton Times on January 13th. Have you done anything more to develop that plan? And if you can tell me, the recovery meetings are supposed to be held every month. It seems the statute says shall be held every month. I see one was held in January. Is there a reason why they're not being held every month? I realize March is difficult, given this current circumstances. But will they be rescheduled?
Yes, there is one scheduled for Monday. A part of it is availability of our experts that we bring into those meetings. We are, we will have a review of the building program and the reconfiguration this Monday, March 30th. We're going to begin that meeting at 5:30. It will be a Zoom meeting, just as we're talking, we're connected tonight. So you will hear some discussion of options with building reconfiguration. One of the issues, just so you know, is financial, as you can imagine. Because the district has limited, or very few dollars to work on this, we did have about $5 million. But because of the cost for asbestos and other items that we're doing right now, we have limited funds to do anything. We would have to go out for a bond issue. And it would be very difficult, under these current circumstances, to do a bond issue right now. So all of that, what you're talking about for building projects would have to fall under a bond issue, which again, the board would have to walk through each step of that process. We also need to hire an architect and engineering firm who would help us design what we need to do moving forward.
Just one last question, quickly. With regards to the reports, it looks like you're to submit monthly reports to the PDE. Has that been occurring under the recovery process? And are those reports available to the public?
They're not available to the public. They go to PDE, and yes, they have been occurring.
Okay, so a right to know is the best way to obtain those, I guess?
I wouldn't know. They're just summaries of what happens.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Mrs. Orr, did you say just one commenter?
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So we have a presentation, correct?
Yes, sorry, I missed that on the agenda.
That's okay. Do we have Rocco on the line?
Yes, I'm here. Hopefully you can hear me okay.
Are you, yes. Yep. Okay.
Okay. So let's just bear with me as we go through the technology of sharing my screen.
Okay.
Hi, folks. Joe Caccardi's on as well, too.
Oh, great. Hi, Dr. Caccardi.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Okay, can you see the title screen at this point? Scranton School District.
Yes.
Word presentation?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody. Under these trying circumstances, I'm glad that you were able to successfully put together this important meeting for us to provide you a quick update on what is going on within the Northeast Intermediate School, as well as the public, and to really try to gather some action from the board's perspective, so that we can move forward through the next step in the process. So just as a quick summary of where we were, hopefully by now you see a March 2nd School Board Meeting slide. Let's recap what happened at the March 2nd School Board Meeting. The board approved up to $50,000 for the repair of the HVAC system on the new side of the building. That's the 1931 building. Those items that were identified for that allocation of funds included emergency abatement of thermal systems insulation that was damaged above the fan room of the HVAC system. It also included repairs to the room itself. It's a sheet metal room that acts as the air collector for the fan system, and fabrication of an intake duct, which we'll explain in greater detail through this presentation. The board also identified the creation of an environmental task force and identified participants subsequently for that task force, which I'm happy to say did have their first meeting. I think it was last week. And it was a very successful, very productive meeting. So very quickly, on the current update, based on what the board had previously approved, on March 13th, we were at a completion stage of all of the asbestos abatement work that was scheduled to occur, both from the management plans that existed, as well as supplemental inspection data that was captured by us as a part of this project. So we can officially say that all the asbestos has been abated, that is damaged, on the new side of the building. March 18th, Scranton Electric reported that the intake fabrication was completed. That's the AutoCAD drawing you see in the upper right-hand side of your screen. That is what the completed duct will look like when it's in place. And then earlier today, Paul Doherty reported that the hazardous materials that were identified from underneath the auditorium were characterized, packaged, and are ready for shipment tomorrow. So they have been removed from the room. That work has all been done and completed on time, on schedule, and on budget, or I guess I should say under budget. But Paul can speak more to that. In terms of ongoing, we are going through some code approvals, as we discussed, and the production of final reports and documentation. And then the auditorium and old side decisions, which are critical for us to move forward with the reoccupancy and then the next phase of the project. So key decision points coming up include two things generally, the code approval. And I'm going to defer to Dr. Caccardi for a quick update on each of the elements of the authorities having jurisdiction and their status. And then I'll come back to pick up the auditorium status. So, Dr. Caccardi?
So there are four agencies who have potential impact on the project because of their code approval processes. First one is the Scranton Fire Department. The Fire Department inspected the site. They had asked that the school district do the calculations and provide them with a request for occupancy of the new side of the building. After it was inspected, we have those calculations based upon some, how you'll use some of the areas. I understand there's a library area that may be turned into classrooms. So the numbers will probably change up or down a tiny bit. But the numbers are just over 1,000 people. That's staff visitors and students for the 1931 side of the building. And there's no reason to believe that the Scranton Fire Department will have a concern for that, because we do know that they're the appropriate amount of exits in the building and the appropriate amount of exit width. The city also has licensing authority over the mechanical work that's done. That's basically an approval of a building permit. So I see no major concerns there. The Department of Education has some oversight authority. But in short, they have deferred to the city and the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency as the authorities having jurisdiction and identify that they'll follow their guidance. And the final group is the Environmental Protection Agency, who has been involved to a good degree with the Asbestos Hazards Emergency Response Act, the AHIRA compliance of the building. And in that particular case, the EPA has tentatively, or verbally, I would say, identified that they believe there are options for the district to move forward with reoccupying the building. I've talked to them about the plan that we have of separating the buildings and basically doing a new management plan for asbestos and encapsulating or enclosing some of the asbestos areas there. And while that is not specifically called out in their regulations, they have identified that they may not be opposed to that because it provides equal protection. And in some of the discussions that we have had, and I would suggest, I told them that we'd be sending that information to them, based upon a decision of the school board as to exactly what areas of the building they would want to propose for occupancy and what options they have for the ventilation system and any remaining asbestos in the building. We'll talk about that a little bit more as we move forward. Rocky, you want to talk about the auditorium status?
Yeah, okay. So here's where it gets tricky. So I'll call your attention to the drawing that you see. And this represents the lower level of the new building and the auditorium. The area in blue, identified on the drawing as Plenum Number Two, that is the fan room or the HVAC air handler for the auditorium section of the building. As recall, these are three separate structures with three separate systems. The blue box represents the system for the auditorium. The red box or pink box, identified as Plenum One, is the area that you guys had approved the authorization of the $50,000 to fix. So that has been corrected. But now I'll draw your attention to the plenum room, number two. Again, this supplies the auditorium with air. At the bottom of your screen, you'll see a square with an X through it. That represents the air intake, the fresh air intake for the system. It's a vertical chimney, brick structure attached to the old building. But if you follow the blue line from that square box at the bottom, that air is ducted in a metal duct up to this duct room area, right where the arrow is. And then there's a crosshatch. That's where the air comes into the fan. Comes out of the fan, on the other little crosshatch section, out the red line, in a duct. And then where the arrows are, it just disperses underneath the auditorium. So two things of note on this drawing, which I'm going to show you pictures of. The area below the blue box that's identified as duct room, that's an open air. So we essentially have a fan on one side, a metal duct on the other side, and then a big room that separates them. So you can imagine when that fan kicks on and tries to draw air, it gets very little fresh air into the system, but rather will draw air from every open space in this room, which is of pretty poor quality, you'll see. Outgoing air is ducted in that solid red line, in a metal duct, but eventually comes to an area in the storage area number four, where all those arrows are, where it just dumps into the room and then essentially percolates up underneath the seats. So you've seen these pictures before. But again, call your attention to two areas, the duct room and this area, storage area number four, which we refer to as the auditorium plenum. Auditorium intake, so this picture on the screen represents those crosshatched areas. The area to your right is the air intake for the new building. And then right next to this Brian Davis graffiti, there's an area of an air intake on the auditorium side. So you can see the condition of this room and where air, fresh air, will come from. There is ducts on the corresponding opposite wall, but it is not going to get there. So what the board had approved was the creation, at the last meeting, of a metal duct casing to essentially connect these two intakes to the corresponding metal duct on the other side. And as you may recall from the AutoCAD drawing, that system that's required to bring the required amount of fresh air will essentially fill this room with a metal duct. So we will be impeding, when we install that, any movement into or out of the subfloor of the auditorium, the basement area. So it is because of this impediment and because of the poor fresh air exchange that we created that air intake. This is the other side of the output side, if you will, of the fan. If, this is a baseball diamond, right about where the second basement would be at about 2:00 on the face dial, is the output. You can see in that picture, that is the output from the fan. So essentially blows warm air in the winter into this room over the top of what has become a storage area. The gray box you see on the right is a metal duct that's encased in asbestos with varying degrees of damage. And then just general housekeeping clutter, dust and debris. All of these pipes, a lot of these pipes, the green pipes represented on the left-hand side are TSI, thermal systems insulation. And right above this is essentially the floor registers for the auditorium. So it doesn't take much to imagine a lot of fresh air being blown over the top of this and finding its way up into the auditorium and into the lungs of the occupants that are in that auditorium. So because of this, we're presenting the board with a couple of scenarios, a couple of decisions that we will need, or Joe will need, to move forward with the EPA authorization or the EPA request for concurrence. Scenario one, essentially has no additional costs to what you have already authorized. The new side of the building has all of the priority abatement items corrected. There will be some TSI that remains because it's in walls, it's in pipe chases. It's above things that can't be easily accessed. But all of the items that were in the original management plan and what we have identified would have been abated or corrected. The old side would remain, as Joe said, isolated with a firewall, essentially disconnecting it from the rest of the building. And the auditorium would be restricted from entry by anybody, certainly children under AHIRA, because there would be dust and debris and damaged material essentially in the HVAC system. I know we can shut the fan off to prevent active movement of air, but I don't think any public health professional would be comfortable allowing people into that space, given what's underneath it. Scenario number two would include a not-to-exceed price. And these are fresh off the press. Paul did have some vendors in late last week, despite COVID, and was able to secure some additional pricing. New side remains the same, old side remains the same. But in this scenario, the board would approve the cleaning of the space by a qualified contractor and abatement of all asbestos in that area, including the duct work and the TSI, for the cost of roughly $30,000. In fact, I think it's slightly under $30,000. That work would take about a couple of weeks, I think, if we add them together, somewhere in the neighborhood of 15 to 20 days. And essentially would return the space to its original design. We would not be forcing air directly under the seats, but we would fill the room with warm or cool air and then allow the room to do its thing and bring that air up underneath the seats in the auditorium. Scenario number three carries a price tag of roughly $100,000. That's 95 is the current estimate. Again, new side, same, old side, same. The case of the auditorium in this scenario is that we would still incur the costs of scenario two, clean and abate. But we would provide HVAC duct work right from the supply to the underneath of the seats. Essentially, the registers would be in a closed system, as opposed to using the room as the, and again, this is a 5,000-square-foot room. Instead of using the room, we would actually supply a duct, like you have in your house, right to the registers underneath the seats, isolating the system completely. So those are the three options that we believe are available. And we would simply, as the environmental contractor, need to know what your plan is, so that as we craft the approval to the EPA, knowing that this is going to be significantly reviewed administratively and technically, we want to make sure that we don't have to go back multiple times to amend that. So if we know that you're going to move forward in one of these three directions, we will include that into the EPA request at that point. So what are the actions? There are four actions proceeding from here. One is obviously, we would craft the appropriate letters, both to Scranton Fire for occupancy, per their request last week, and to the EPA for concurrence of the building separation and occupancy plan for the auditorium. If the board decides to move forward with options two or three, where abatement occurs, we would, of course, write the specifications and perform clearance assessments to ensure that that is done within the AHIRA protocols and that the area is safe for reoccupancy. Ultimately, I believe the board or the administration or both will need EPA approval of our submission as to what the path forward is going to be. And then, I guess concurrently, the district could work through the reoccupancy plan of what additional cleaning, restocking, maintenance work may have to occur prior to bringing kids in. And again, all of this was crafted and started in motion before the current pandemic situation we're in the midst of. And I understand the timing now may be a little bit different than it was just a month or so ago. So with that said, I do have some supplemental pictures I would like to walk you through, just so that we're clear on what the conditions are. I'll be brief. But I would like to at least have everybody have a good frame of reference, and then I can go back to any particular slide. Again, pictures in this just represent the underneath and the condition, because you're going to see price tags in the thousands of dollars to clean the basement area. And somebody may wonder, why does it cost, you know, $10,000 or $20,000 to clean this space without touching any of the asbestos? And it's simply because it appears to have been a storage area unkept for quite a while. But the concerning thing here is that, as you can see in the picture on the left, right above that asbestos pipe, there's a little circle that represents one of hundreds, I guess, dozens, certainly, floor registers, where that air goes up into the auditorium. Again, some additional pictures of the TSI and storage within the auditorium plenum space. Here are two pictures of what we refer to as the duct room. Remember, I showed you pictures of the intake side of the duct room, where the walls had the louvers. This is the opposite wall. Picture on the right actually shows the duct. If you were to follow that duct, it goes underneath the auditorium and up into the fresh air intake or the brick chimney that we speak of. This area, this duct room, is actually below a courtyard outside, which some of you that went to school there have been around the building, may be familiar with. But again, this room, like the area underneath the auditorium itself, is a hodgepodge of 50 years of storage of various debris. And this has the added dimension of it catches a lot of weather because there's exterior right above it. So it tends to collect a fair amount of water, snowmelt, salt, just general debris. Again, two additional pictures of what it looks like in the duct room. On the picture on the left, where the drums are, to the left of the drums is the auditorium. To the right are the intakes. And the Scranton Electric duct connects those two pieces and will absolutely hinder the removal of anything out of that room, once that duct goes in. So if we do connect the duct, if we were to do that, excuse me, if we were to do that today, just by cleaning out the duct room, we would essentially landlock everything underneath the auditorium. We would never be able to physically remove the materials, because while, as messy as this is, there's at least a pathway that can be cleared. Once that area is filled and the duct is connected, it's virtually impossible, because there's no other way out of that room than through this corridor. Again, some additional pictures of the condition of the lining of the duct. And on the right-hand side, you will see the air output from the fan room. And on the right-hand side, you will see the air output from the fan room. Some further pictures of the storage that is here. These pictures outdoors represent that courtyard area in between the buildings. If we look at the picture on the right-hand side, the area to the left where the little graffiti is there, that represents the auditorium. The building to your right represents the 1931 building. And it is this area in the middle that catches, as you would imagine, a lot of water, a lot of snowmelt, stormwater, and there is a drain there. And there is a kind of a pigeon coop on one end that just collects water and eventually it finds its way into that duct room. So there is some maintenance work that would need to happen here, but I believe that could be taken by building personnel to seal the cracks and repair some of the drains that are causing the water issues. These pictures represent the floor registers. Remember, I said underneath this, underneath a lot of these seats, those bells that we've spoke of, that's what they look like. That's where the air comes up and goes underneath each of the seats across the lower level of the auditorium. And then the last set of pictures represent the fresh air intake where the fresh air starts. So the picture on the left is the brick chimney where the fresh air is collected. This picture is from inside of that fresh air. We are sure that it is separated and isolated from the old side fresh air intake. So the only input into here is fresh air from above the roof gets drawn down through this chimney in a duct through a set of filters underneath the auditorium. And now, right now, goes into the duct room, but what the installation of that duct will connect the entire system. So that represents the presentation, if you will. Just bear with me. I will go back to the original drawing just so that we're all clear and can get our bearings. Plenum room number two is the fan, starts at the chimney, comes down through a duct, cross this open room, out through the red line, in a metal duct and into the underside of the auditorium. What we are asking today is for the board's decision that if they are going to abate and clear the space, and this drawing identified as storage number four, 5,134 square feet, if you are going to authorize that work and abatement, that it be done now so that logistically, the contractor can remove the equipment and the abatement can be done at a reasonable price. And it will further allow the installation of the air intake duct that you had previously authorized on the May 2nd, on the March 2nd meeting. So with that, I'll go ahead. Sorry, Dr. Kachardi.
Before you go back to the three decisions, which I think would be the slide you have up now, maybe you can go back to the floor plan and the diagram. And let me mention, there you go. Let me just mention what I believe would be my concerns, and they're probably three in moving forward with the project. Not that any of them are insurmountable, but three things to be aware of. The first one, and I'll say it in an abbreviated form, is can you fit everybody in the building? And again, the fire department in our calculations will give you numbers up around 1,000. So while it may not be everyone, I feel comfortable that there are exit widths and exits so that if you were to move forward with the 1931 side of the building and/or the auditorium area, they could be made safe from a life safety and an exit passage standpoint. Number two, the second question I have is not quite as, it's a little bit murkier. And that's what will EPA say about the asbestos plan that we have? And let me first start off by saying that originally, every school building, and you have one school building here, has an asbestos management plan. That asbestos management plan looks to make things as safe as possible as you move forward based on risks of the different types and configurations of asbestos, thermal systems insulation, coating materials, surfacing materials, whatever the case may be. In the past, there were, it's the assumption of EPA that the management plans were not completely complied with. And I think we know that there was friable asbestos in areas where it impacted the ventilation system. So as you go forward, we're asking EPA to do two or three things. I think somebody's cleaning their dishes in the background. Maybe you could put yourself on mute if you're doing your coffee and teacups.
Yes, thank you. I was just going to say that.
Just so everybody could hear. Okay, great.
Thank you.
So what we would be asking EPA to do would be this. Please confirm that or concur with this plan that is not specifically spelled out in your HIRA regulations because we believe it is equally protected, protective. Again, we're not doing check the box A, B, and C in a typical plan. We're asking them for concurrence on something that we believe would be equally protective. Number one, don't consider this an entire building. Consider it a separate building that is not in service by the schools, that no one will use with a firewall separation between it, and subsequently, a new management plan for the asbestos that's in the 1931 and potentially the area that's underneath the auditorium sides. Again, that's not, that didn't happen in the past. It's not to say that can't happen now, but it's the first part of the request. The second part of the request then is to leave the friable thermal systems insulation, the coat, the pipe lagging that's inaccessible right now because the areas around the ventilation system will have been repaired or are repaired right now, or the asbestos thermal systems insulation that can be removed underneath the auditorium if you choose to address that area underneath the auditorium. All of those areas will either be abated or enclosed. Those are two key words. EPA says for damaged or potentially significantly damaged thermal systems insulation in a building, either encapsulate or remove it. We're saying we have an equally protective option in enclosing it, which is not one of their specific actions that's called out for thermal systems insulation. It is for other things like flooring materials or sprayed-on materials. But we're asking them to apply that particular logic and standard then to this area of the building, which will be rendered equally safe by, number one, calling it a separate building and developing a separate management plan for any asbestos that remains in there. And granted, that's the inaccessible stuff. And then, number two, not removing or encapsulating it, but keeping it in an enclosed area behind the walls. And while that's the 99% discussion, I think it would also come with things like, in addition to just inspections on a six-month basis, probably some confirmation that those chases were kept under a negative pressure, potentially some air samples to confirm that later on down the line, again, because it's not the typical EPA remedy. I'll be happy to talk about that and answer questions as Rocco puts up the three options and you discuss this. The third option or the third discussion that I guess I just want to make sure is out there on the floor is that in this building, while all of these things are operational and can be operationalized, they may not be optimal because, again, now you'll have 1,000 people in the building that with a ventilation system that was put together not necessarily to service fresh air exchanges for that amount of people under the current standards, but an acceptable one for the times that it was designed and put in. So again, just to summarize, fire code issues seem to be okay. EPA issues, I don't have concern with the safety of what's happening from a hygiene standpoint, but we're in an area where these sorts of concurrences typically don't occur. So my concern is for the time and the review process for EPA to give us concurrence in this, if you choose to do that, if you choose to get their concurrence, because it's a very non-typical request that goes to them. And the third, again, I think is the status of ventilation to begin with then because you may not have four to 12 air exchanges an hour, but you will have a system that's operational. Rocco, can I turn it back to you to put the three options again up? And then possibly Paul or, and Paul, maybe you want to talk about anything else specific that's happened or potential steps forward?
Thanks, Joe.
Again, these are the decisions we need. Let me stop for a second because there may be some questions for me. But if you choose to move forward with any of these scenarios, my big question is that number two issue, which is can I get this to EPA? Because although you may be thinking you have a longer timeframe, time is relative to the EPA, and it may not be a quick answer for them to write back on. It may be. It may be that they can get back very quickly, but because it's non-typical, it may take some time. And I know you're investing money in the process as well, too. Rock?
I got it. Thanks, Joe.
And I would like to point out to our board members, the last time we had a board meeting up at CTC, there was, you know, three different scenarios that you were asked to consider, one for the newer side, one for the auditorium, one for the older side, and it was just decided to go ahead with the new side. What was unknown at that point was that the design of the duct work that was going to be installed to complete the new side was going to really take away the ability to get at this material underneath the auditorium, and that's why this is being brought forward now. You know, I think that if we went and did it after the duct work is installed, I'm not saying it's impossible, but it's going to be significantly more difficult and probably much more expensive to clean out that room and abate it at that point. You know, initially, we thought scenario two was going to come in at around $40,000. With the quotes we've gotten over the last week, it looks like it's going to be just under $28,000 to get this work done. We did receive multiple quotes from companies. And, you know, I am selecting the cheapest ones that we've gotten.
So I guess I'll start with the first question. Looking at scenario number two, it says debris cleaned and all asbestos abated by a licensed contractor. That does include all asbestos, correct?
Correct. And in the current scenario two, the debris would be cleaned by a third party, not a licensed abatement contractor. And then, once the room is rendered clean of debris, all of the asbestos would be abated. That includes somewhere in the neighborhood of about 2,200 square feet of duct insulation, that gray material around the outside of the fresh air duct, as well as all of the pipe and elbow thermal systems insulation that's in the room. So essentially, the room is clean and there'd be no concern from an asbestos standpoint of pushing air into the plenum at that point.
All right. And with that, with scenario number two, that would put this system into the... It would be used as the way it was originally supposed to be intended, its intended use, correct?
Correct.
Meaning that the auditorium, I'm sorry, this is Tariyani, meaning that the auditorium, you're going to get full use of the auditorium?
Correct. You would have full use of the auditorium, but what I was referring to is the original design was to use that room as an air handling system that would return this. I'm not at all, and I'm not an HVAC engineer by training, but we've been told from the engineers and Scranton Electric, it's a very inefficient system. But we're not speaking about efficiency here. We're just talking about public health and safety. So from a health and safety standpoint, all of the asbestos would be out of the space, if you will, and no potential to become airborne at that point in the auditorium.
Dr. Kachardi, did I hear you say that you had, I think I wrote it down, so I'm hoping I got it right, something about tentative and/or verbal approval for this general idea with somebody from the EPA? Did I mess that up or did I hear something like that?
No, that's correct. I spoke to the HIRA person from the region who has been up in your location, and he agreed that the very first thing to do would be to make the area as safe as possible and develop a new management plan for what remains based upon your decisions about what part of the buildings to use. And if it was this scenario two, what would remain would be the basically inaccessible asbestos behind walls or behind chases or those sorts of areas. Everything that would be, anything that would be accessible is removed under the scenario.
Who was the person you're referring to and when did the conversation take place?
Conversation took place about a week ago. The gentleman that I spoke to is the HIRA inspector who was up, and I'm drawing a blank right now.
Rich, Rich Ponak.
Was up, yeah. I spoke with him myself.
Okay. And finally, on this topic, I think I heard you say later on the phrase, "if we choose to get EPA concurrence." Would you expand on that, please?
Sure. Under the current HIRA rules, you're required to do certain things. And if you do those things, in compliance with the published rules, there is, and make your submittals at the appropriate time and have your inspections done at the appropriate time, you, how do I say this, self-certify that you're in compliance. What you're looking to do here is something that's not specifically spelled out in those rules. So while you need not ask EPA for concurrence, while the law doesn't specifically say ask for concurrence with a process that is not specifically spelled out in our laws, it makes sense to me that you do it. So I believe you have the option to move forward without EPA's concurrence. If you assume that it's either in compliance with the written law or that they would concur, my recommendation would be to get their written concurrence first because it's something that's a non-typical process and it's not spelled out in the rules. That make sense?
I hear what you're saying. I also think I heard you say that the time at that point, the time for the EPA to get back to us about concurrence or lack thereof is sort of out of our control, correct?
Correct.
Thanks.
It's Ro Hume here, Dr. Kachardi. Were we to, my nightmare would be we would go ahead and do the work and then be told that we would not be able to achieve compliance. So I think I'm, Jim, I know I heed the possible delays, but equally, it would be awful if we put more money into abating the thing and then were told, no, it wasn't possible to get EPA approval for it. My second question is, if we went with scenario two and then the duct work was installed in plenum one, that would also rule out the possibility of later installing the direct ducted supply connections under the seats. Is that correct?
Rocco, you want to address that one?
Yeah, I'll take the second question. Absolutely, it would complicate the installation of subsequent direct ducting. We didn't get pricing for what that would look like after the intake was connected. But absolutely, we would imagine it would increase the cost from what has been proposed now. It's something just under about $65,000 to do the duct work. That's the difference between two and three. That number comes in at about 65. If we were to install that intake... If we were to install that intake and do it six months from now, I, I wouldn't want to wager as to how much that would go up. I would certainly supply a number. I would get that. But I have to imagine there's a multiplier to complicate that.
But no, I, I accept it. But scenario two does in fact restore the status quo ante and would seem to be a reasonable thing. But what about if? Someone drew a smiley face. Returning us to slightly more sensible discussion. What about if we did go ahead and implement scenario two? And then we did not get the EPA compliance agreement?
Ro, pardon me, can I just ask you to hang on for one second? Are we, I didn't realize I was. Eliminated? Are we getting out of here? Is that, Sean, is that what you're asking?
I think we should get rid of these people. Something's going on.
Yeah, I just took, I just took two people out.
I think there's another one you gotta get out.
There's another one, Ginny.
My computer said there was a corruption. Okay.
I got rid of the two. I, I found them. I got rid of them.
Okay. There's another gentleman.
There's still someone on this.
A bodybuilder of some source. He's currently on my screen right below Rocco.
How are you?
My computer's telling me we're corrupted and now someone's saying hello and there was a bodybuilder.
Yeah.
Mr. Audi, do we need to?
Yeah.
Get out of this meeting and try to rejoin?
I don't think that.
Oh my goodness.
Okay.
I would say so.
I don't even know how to find these people.
Mr. Audi? Mr. Audi? Do you feel as though it would be permissible?
Hello?
Yep.
Can you hear me?
I'm here.
Can leave this meeting and send a new link?
Yes, only individuals can receive the link. It can't be live on, on the website.
Okay, please email me. Email Virginia. It's all, all I could do. John?
All right.
Yeah, this is.
Why don't we, we can't, we don't know who's doing this.
We get out of this meeting?
I am.
And.
I mean, I wish we could just.
Get rid of the people?
The problem is, yeah, because the problem is I'm concerned about the rest of the community rejoining.
Yes, I agree.
So I, if at all possible, it would be better if we could continue. But I don't know how to edit out the person who's doing this or the people.
I don't know either. I can't.
I can see on my screen.
Is Kuchardi still on here?
I look at participants, I see hello there is screen sharing.
So we just take him out? Ginny?
Yep. Got rid of them. There's still someone drawing.
Here, here's, well, I think this one.
If, if you go to participants at the bottom, there's, it says 72 and you scroll down, you can kind of find the one that looks like.
All the way at the bottom.
Right. I don't have the ability to edit.
Yeah, I can't find.
Can we just stop the video? Can we stop all videos and just have, just have a discussion?
Yeah, let's try doing that.
Letting people share their screen.
Let's go back to the, back to our own, yeah.
There we go.
All right.
Oh my goodness.
All right. Here we are.
That's going to be a reality if we put that, if we put that meeting address out to the public. They're going to be able to see it. We have lots of different protocols because I'm doing online teaching for Marywood in real time. And if we publish it, that is always going to be a possibility.
Yes.
If, if you don't know who it is, don't let them in. They have to put their real name. Not Judy's iPad or Bert's.
Hi, guys. This is Steve Knight. Stephen Knight.
Nice.
Hi. My, my recommendation is if somebody talks to Zoom about that being hacked.
Yes.
They will either be able to give you, you know, a way to do it safely or they'll make ours safe some way.
I just locked the meeting.
They don't want that to happen.
We can't get anybody else in here, so.
Yeah, that's good. I was just going to recommend that whenever you do a Zoom meeting, you can lock it as soon as you have all your participants. Like once the meeting starts, you can lock it so that nobody else can enter. Yeah.
I just found that, so I locked it.
Yep.
Okay.
Problem is this is a public meeting. And.
Oh.
And, you know, while if we're locking out someone who wants to watch this, I have a problem with that.
See, I'll lock them out if they don't tell you their name.
Well, their name, at least.
You know, they're putting fake stuff up there.
Yeah. I, I think at this point, have we, we've solved this problem for the moment, correct?
Yeah, I think they're gone.
I think, I think there's, there's the one more. Yeah, there's one. If you go into the participants, scroll all the way to the bottom. It's something 3001.
You can't throw them out? Okay.
You can, Virginia should be.
Yep, I got them out.
Okay.
Throw them out. My God.
70 participants.
All right. Why don't we proceed?
Okay. Thank, thank you for bearing with us, everybody. Ro, I believe you were speaking. I'm sure you'll be able to pick right up with your thought exactly where you left off.
I think I can. My nightmare is that, first of all, what we're proposing is that no students would be in the 1906 side, right? 1904 side, the old side. That it will be closed off completely. Is that what I'm hearing?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, we won't go into what we spent remediating that side. We'll just move on. So what, what happens if we continue with? And it certainly seems to me to make sense that option two makes a lot of sense because that will restore the status quo ante and it's not particularly expensive. But what about if we do that and then the EPA says, no, you're never going to be able to do that because you're going to have to do something else? How, how likely do we think that scenario is?
So I would, I don't think there's a good answer to that. My, my gut feeling is that you're going to get an answer. My, my gut feeling is that the worst nightmare would be that they don't give you an answer because there's no codified way for them to say yes or no to this. That they continue just to kind of go on and say, yeah, it's okay, or no, it's not okay. Or then it takes them a long time to give you this answer. I think that's your worst case scenario.
So, but essentially, but we can't reopen the building until we have their approval, can we?
You can move forward if you believe you're in compliance. EPA will not issue you a permit. They'll enforce the rule, the asbestos regulations, the AHERA regulations. So if you believe you're in compliance with the AHERA regulations, 99% of the places are, so they move forward. In your case, you're not following a straight line. You're asking for an approved equal process to move forward.
I have to chime in here because, and Dr. Finan, I'm probably going to call on you. But we do have a letter from Pedro Rivera, Secretary of Ed, that basically states that we are to rely on, for example, the EPA. So it would not be the superintendent, my recommendation, that we move back into that building until we have EPA says it is okay. Now, if the board chooses to make that decision, then that's the worst decision. But I myself would not feel comfortable putting students back in without the EPA saying it is okay. And I need to be on the record stating that.
I agree, totally agree.
And I would.
At this point. Sorry, Dr. Finan, go ahead.
I would concur with what Missy said. I, since we have the letter from Pedro Rivera, I would not recommend that we put children in there until we have clearance from the EPA.
All right. So this is Tom and I agree.
Yeah.
Where we're at, both of these, we're, we're going to run these scenarios past the EPA, right? We're, we're looking to get their, their approval first before we move forward with any of the work, correct?
I believe. That was not my understanding of tonight, but it, it could be. My understanding was the board was going to choose an option. And the work, whatever that option was, whether it was to continue work or whatever the scenario was, the three scenarios that were given to you, the board would choose one. And then in coincide with that, Dr. Kuchardi, you would be preparing the paperwork for the EPA. That was my understanding. But again, this is the board's direction on how we're moving forward.
And. Okay. So my understanding there was that we were going to choose a, a direction. And then Dr. Kuchardi was going to approach the EPA about the, getting approval from them prior to start of work is what I took from the presentation.
Again, that's clearly up to the board on how you want to proceed.
Yeah, that, that was my understanding of the scenario here as well. I'm sorry, Jimmy. I, I think that was you speaking.
What I, what I heard was Dr. Kuchardi saying that what, in asking the EPA to sign off on something, whether before or after the work is done, we'd be asking it to do something that is not normally one of its functions, doctor. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So we're actually asking the EPA to do something that they could simply say, no, we, we don't do that.
As, as indeed they've said on other occasions about things they don't do.
Right. So we'd be waiting for something that may never come because it's not one of their functions.
And in both scenario two and three, we're both, both fall under not one of their functions, correct? They're both not specifically spelled out?
I think the entire thing of separating the two buildings and whether that is thing is also not spelled out, is it, Dr. Kuchardi? We don't have, we don't have any assurance yet that the EPA is going to accept that completely separating and in a sense abandoning the old building would still be sufficient to make the new building side of it acceptable. We, we don't have even that information yet, do we?
So we have the discussions that I have had with the enforcement person from EPA who has seen the, who has seen your, your building. He's been up there. I mean, you've met him. Who has, has listened to the three options or the, the commutations and permutations of those options as well too. And leaves that the intention of the rules, the AHERA rules, is to make things safe for children in the school setting. What you're proposing is to do a different way of making things safe for children in the school setting. Again, this isn't the standard prescribed method. However, the steps to go in that direction make sense. So I didn't get, you know, you guys are crazy for even doing this. What about this? What about that? What about doing the other thing? What I got was, okay, Joe, that makes sense. Let's see this in print. Let, you know, send us a letter from the, from the school board or from the school district. Send us this that has some flesh and bones to it. And, you know, at that point, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at it. But I didn't get then, yes, we'll reply within 30 days as is described in some of their other regulations. Because it's just, the rules are just silent on that. It's just a non-typical situation.
See, if we were to go ahead and do this and then do it and then in anticipation of not asking the question because we're, as you say, virtually self-certifying, wouldn't we all be liable if we put kids back in there and then they came back and said no?
I can't tell you what the EPA would do from a, from a, a enforcement standpoint. I mean, EPA can enforce these, their measures on the school district. But I can tell you that at least the discussions that I had at the 30,000 foot level made sense to them. Knowing that this wasn't their typical discussion that they have, you know, 50 days, 50, 60 days in a row. They just don't have these sorts of discussions.
Right.
I agree. I completely concur. Flesh it out. Make some sort of a, a proposal and we'll see what happens. I can push at that stage of the game and maybe we'll get a rapid answer. Or maybe we'll get a no enforcement answer. But it's just, you know, we're into this, this territory where there hasn't been a lot of, of, this isn't your typical situation and the laws are not codified to handle this.
Yeah.
So pardon me for one moment here. My, you didn't, no. Mr. Audi, I've just gotten a message from one of our directors who's run into a technical issue. I, I believe our policy does dictate that we can call a 10-minute recess to allow that member to reconnect. Is that correct? Okay, may I? When we do that, do we just all hold on this call at this time?
I would suggest we hold on this call. We could certainly mute our microphones and wait and let us know when the person is back.
Okay, then may I have a motion to recess for a period of 10 minutes?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
May I do all in favor or do we need a roll call?
Do all in favor.
All in favor?
All right.
All right.
Bye.
Any objections?
Do we have any objections?
No.
Okay, we'll be back in 10 minutes. Thank you everyone for your patience. Okay, I think we are at 10 minutes here. Is everyone in agreement with that?
Yep.
Yes, we're all here, correct?
Yes.
Everybody's present. Do we need another roll call, Ms. Groudi, to be sure, or?
It wouldn't hurt.
Okay. May I have a roll call, please, Mrs. Orr? Sure. Ms. Cruz?
I'm here, I just wanted to apologize to everybody, my phone ran out of data, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Ms. Fox? Catherine?
Present.
Okay. Ms. Hugh?
Present.
Mr. Malloy?
Present.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Mrs. Welby?
Present.
Mrs. Yanni?
She said present.
Oh, thank you. Ms. Martin?
Present.
Now, you're present, thank you. Okay, where were we?
We were about to, we were discussing whether or not the EPA approval or whatever they do, and not an approval, but assurance that we would be regarded as in compliance was essential before we started the work or not.
Ma'am, I'm just going to, if you don't mind, President Gilmartin, I would like to make a comment on that.
Please.
We, we are no doubt, the Scranton School District is no doubt on the map with regard to the EPA. This was almost, it was statewide news, maybe national news, and the EPA came of its own accord. It, it looked at the, the building, and the buildings, and then, at our request, actually got on the phone with us and answered a lot of questions for us on how to proceed. I personally think, as the solicitor to this district, it would be foolhardy for us to not attempt, at the very least, to get the EPA approval before we consider our options and before we put a student back in that building. If they don't want to respond, and they don't want to give us the authority, so be it. But I want to be on the record to say, we tried. That's my advice, and I think it would be, it would, it would be foolhardy to say, let's assume compliance until we hear otherwise.
Yes, Mr. Audi, this is Tom. I think the board would be in full agreement with that. I don't think there's any, any, anybody that feels any different than that. I think it was what we got from the presentation. Some saw the presentation a little different than others. I felt that Dr. Kachardi wanted us to decide which way we were gonna go, and with that, he would be allowed to put that in writing and, and submit that to the EPA.
Yes, that's correct. I'd like to give them as much information as possible so that the answers that, that you may get happen as easily and as quickly as possible. We don't have to go back for a second or a third revisit of it.
Dr. Kachardi, my, my understanding coming into this based not only on the conversation that took place with the Environmental Task Force, but with some conversations that took place leading up to the discussion we're having right now, my understanding was the, we were putting these options on the table and that there would be language in the resolutions, which I'm sure we can add as a friendly amendment, if necessary, that would be approving the steps that we were committing to take this evening pending the EPA approval. Whether, you know, there were one or two smaller steps, we said, yes, we definitely want to do A or B, but we're not going to invest in C until we have the EPA approval. But we are saying that, given the EPA approval, we are committing tonight to go forward with that step.
I would agree with that.
Me too.
I was thinking that this needed to be said, and if I'm wrong, I apologize, but to whatever extent we were either elected or appointed to be on this board, it was to make decisions like this, and to choose the best experts, to choose the best contractors, and to try to get these kids back into Northeast. And I think we said some things last meeting that might have led parents to think that we were full speed ahead. And it's my opinion, not to contradict Tom, it's my opinion as a school board director that, based upon what Dr. Kachardi has told me tonight and told us, we don't need EPA concurrence. As a matter of fact, I don't even know if that is a thing that the EPA does. I mean, I'd like EPA concurrence, if it's a thing. I'd like concurrence from the Department of Homeland Security, too, but I'm not sure that we need it, or that if we ask for it, we'd ever get it. And I'm not sure that the EPA is any different. I just wanted to say that for the record.
And Jimmy, that leads me to, to a question that I hope is helpful here. In that scenario where we're all saying we are seeking the EPA approval, letter of concurrence, realizing that that may not be a quick turnaround time, could we conceivably, we make our decisions tonight, we share the information with the EPA, we have whatever time on our side right now, for unfortunate reasons, six weeks, eight weeks, three months down the road, we haven't heard anything, would we then have the opportunity to say, we're no longer waiting, we would like to move ahead? We would like to say that we are going to do this work without that letter of concurrence?
Yes. I'm in favor of that.
I agree, we sent something requesting, but we put a timeline on it. If we don't hear back in a certain amount of time, then we go ahead.
I, what I would suggest, if I may, if I may, I, I don't think, I think we need to put it in writing, and I think we need to stress the urgency. I doubt we're gonna be able to put a timeline on the federal government. But I do think we could simply be persistent in following up.
And could we, could we put a timeline on ourselves?
Yeah, that's right.
They say, we're gonna revisit this issue, I'm sorry, John, you know, we're gonna revisit this issue in 60 days, whatever it is. But that wouldn't be their timeline, that would be us putting an alert on our calendar to say, don't forget that we've reached out for this advice, and if we haven't had it, we're going to revisit, have this conversation again.
Right.
I think that makes more sense.
Okay, thank you.
I totally agree, but does Dr. Finan's understanding that we need, the PDE has essentially deferred their approval for reoccupancy to the EPA, make that a little moot? Because if that's what PDE is saying, that we need sign off from the EPA before we reoccupy, doesn't that make that moot?
I believe, and maybe, Missy, you can join in here. I do believe the letter was fairly clear from Pedro Rivera. I don't have it in front of me, so perhaps you can recall. I think, I think we do have to get something from them that would, that would allow us to put children back in. I'm not saying concurrence, I'm not saying, but I believe that we would have to involve the EPA prior to us being allowed to put children back in. Is that your understanding, Missy?
Yes, I don't specifically, I apologize, I don't have the letter, it's in my office. I don't have it with me. And I don't think they specifically say the EPA in the letter. But my concern is that the EPA is involved now. And I know, Dr. Finan, when you reached out to PDE to say, what is it that we need to have in place? The, I, I don't, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it was, we need the proper channels, whatever they are, before you put any, that say that the building is safe. And again, maybe I'm being extra cautious, and I will always be extra cautious. So that is not anything that is new. But I am not comfortable knowing that the EPA is involved and has come and questioned myself, Mr. Doherty, members, you know, have looked at our buildings, and then to say that we're, and it doesn't sound that way from what the board's saying. You're considerate, you are going to let Dr. Kachardi do what he needs to do to submit the letter to the EPA. As the superintendent of the district, I would feel much more comfortable with the EPA saying, yes, the building is safe for children. And if it's not the EPA, then who is it? I guess that's my question for Dr. Kachardi. Who is it that needs to say, all of the work is complete, and we're ready to put kids back in?
So from my standpoint, and you're, I would strongly recommend you keep EPA involved in this process. My, my concerns and the hesitation I have in some of the comments, if you have them, are not due to the process that can be laid out in keeping people, people safe. They're, they're related to the, to the, that this is just a new process, or a different process for EPA to go through. At this point, we have an, I have an open discussion. Mike has an open discussion, Rocco has an open discussion on the things that are occurring. There is nothing adversarial at all about the EPA in the discussions that we're having about forward movement. The, the, the sort of "duh" in the sentences comes when we ask for some sort of concurrence, just because it's not a typical thing. So again, I would strongly recommend asking for concurrence. I would expect that on a technical level, things will make sense to them. What I don't know is what happens to letters that may go into the ozone a little bit, because it may take more time than we have from the fire department or some of the other resources. So I like your, I like your pathway. I like the decision of keeping the dialogue open with the regulators at EPA. Number two, making a decision that you think is best. And let's at least, I would suggest we at least start the process, get your letter in there. We can continue discussions as it moves along, and, you know, move forward at that point. If you have to make any sort of draconian decisions, right now may not be the time to do it, because we may be able to get you that answer relatively quickly.
And I do happen to have the letter here with me. It does state at the end of the first page that the PDE does not recommend, would not support any effort to prematurely send schoolchildren or staff back into a school building before testing and remediation efforts are completed consistent with the recommendations of EPA or DEP officials. So I certainly think that that doesn't say, you must have a letter signed, sealed, and delivered from them, but it absolutely says, keep them in the loop, keep them in this conversation. conversation. So I think moving forward, seeking this letter of concurrence is smart and responsible. But if we do determine, you know, 60 days out, we want to have this conversation again, because as to Jimmy's point, we don't want to just keep waiting for something that is never going to come. I think we owe it to everyone to revisit this.
Thank you, Katie.
Absolutely. And I'm glad that my filing skills are not, that's not a symptom of coronavirus, so that's one bit of good news.
And I think as you move forward, one of the things that's important to the discussion is whatever decision that the board chooses to make, the three options, there is a need for a new management plan, that new management plan identifies how to safely, with the EPA concurrence, how to safely move forward. So you have that game plan, and that goes into their files. You're throwing the ball back in their cart to tell you if there's something that's not appropriate, approved, safe, you know, those sorts of things.
Katie, if I might ask too, just for my own, because I don't have the letter, who's that letter directed to, me or the school board?
That letter is directed to Superintendent McTiernan.
Thank you.
Sure.
I understand that we have parents that want their children back into Northeast today, if possible, but we also have an equal number of parents that are concerned about the environmental issues. So to rush the project along and sacrifice some safety in the meantime, I don't, I just don't feel that's appropriate. I would always err on the side of caution, and even overabundance of caution, which we hear that word, I think, daily now, overabundance of caution, but, and listen to what the experts say. From that very first public meeting, the cry was to get the experts involved. We got the experts involved. The EPA said that it was not an appropriate place to have children. We needed to do X, Y, and Z, and to not have their approval again, I think would be foolish. Just to rush things along, I don't, I don't think that that's a wise, wise move.
So I think if we're going to look at this, I think that the safest move may be scenario number two, and I think it kind of follows with Dr. Kuchardi's statement there. With scenario number two, we get the room to where it was originally intended, the usage, the original use of that space, we had all the asbestos remediated and removed, so it's not in the area, and then we're working for that EPA clearance, and then can revisit it as, as needed going forward. But it doesn't slow us with work, and it also gives us some time to get that clearance from them if we get it.
To be honest, Tom, I would be very happy to gamble on option scenario two. It's $27,000 or $28,000, whatever we've said, $27,713.45. I would be happy to gamble with that, to go ahead with it and get the work done, on the theory that, one way or the other, we're unlikely to be told that because of that work, we can't work out a system to get the school reopened. I would be extremely hesitant to commit to $95,000 if there was, if there was the risk at that point that we might do it. I think it's a little bit like $27,000, do the work, and then we can work out how we get through it is one thing, $95,000, I think, is a different bet.
I also think it gives us some wiggle room, that if it comes back, that that isn't up to par for them, we may move into that $95,000 range. But looking at both scenarios, both number two and number three, both are not specifically spelled out by the EPA, so they're, both of them are a gamble at this point in time. So I think it would be a safe bet to move with number two, and if we get that clearance, then we're in good shape. And if we don't, maybe we look to maybe put number three in writing for the EPA and wait on that before we start work.
And, and do you think we should gamble? I mean, my feeling is we should gamble and go ahead and do the work while we're waiting for the EPA to come back with a very carefully hedged and written bureaucraties. We don't agree with anything you're saying, but we're not disagreeing on the huge job.
I think Dr. Kuchardi stepping in on that would be a good one to see if he would like to go ahead with the work on scenario two, if he felt safe with that.
I think the difference between scenario number two and scenario number three doesn't affect the potential asbestos exposure, it affects what happens in the ventilation of the building that you're then going to reoccupy in the fall or wherever. So basically, under scenario two, as the air comes into the auditorium, let me back up, scenario two or three really have no difference in the 1931 side of the school. The difference is that the air that would go into the auditorium goes through a common plenum, which is cluttered, but at that point would be cleaned. It's a non-typical ventilation system. How do I explain it? It's like pushing air through your basement to get it up to your bedroom.
Yeah.
Versus going through a duct to get it there.
Yeah. But that's, that is the status quo ante, isn't it, Dr. Kuchardi?
I'm sorry?
That's the status quo ante. That's what used to be done.
Yeah.
Is, I'm just asking, I'm not offering an opinion. Scenario one is, restricts the use of the auditorium completely?
Scenario one does, yes.
That has already been done?
Correct.
And scenario two allows access to the auditorium, but scenario three and the individual duct work is preferable? Is that what I'm understanding?
That's correct. This is Rocco.
Okay.
And, and I will just say, if, if at some point there's a decision to just leave it, you saw the pictures of what it looks like. If the EPA inspector, enforcer, is to come up to look at the building, and we're going to show him how we're going to separate the two, at some point, he's going to go down into the basement and take a look. And I just, I'm fearful if there's no action, that's what his takeaway is going to be, is that they want to let kids in this building, given this situation. So from a practical standpoint, again, not a, not as a public health practitioner, but as somebody looking at the outside, I can't imagine anybody would want that situation to continue that's down in that basement area.
So, let me ask this question. As, as our expert that, you know, we're asking to look at this, you're not recommending scenario one?
Scenario one is what's occurring now. That's the default position, just don't let kids into that area. And again, I think to Dr. Kuchardi's point, that's an atypical solution. What we're just saying, we're closing the door to the auditorium, which is in the new building. That is not an approved method, close the door, which is essentially what we're doing.
So then you're not, so we can, I'm just trying to clarify, so you're not recommending that we stick with option one?
I'll defer to Dr. Kuchardi on that one.
So while I have to say, all three options can be done, option number one would require that there be separation, fire separations between the auditorium and the new building, and you would lose the, you would lose the use of the auditorium then because of those permanent fire separations and interconnections with the ventilation. So while it could be done, it makes sense to me to go to options number two or number three, if you are not looking for just an immediate remedy. An immediate remedy being, you know, very short term, because options number two and options number three then give you more space and more options. Now you're at my area of expertise and into Dr. Tiernan's area of expertise, the, what happens to the kids in the building and the space and that sort of a thing. I think you get more for your money with two and three.
It would seem foolish to lose both the old building and the auditorium, because we're increasing the concentration of people in the 1931 side anyway. And to then take a great chunk out of that side as well would seem to me foolish.
Yeah. Dr. Kuchardi, I have a question with, we all know the intention of everyone, I believe, although I don't want to speak for anybody, is to get the kids back at Northeast as soon as we can. Having said that, do you feel, and this may be a question that you can't answer, but I'm trying to help the board with any, with the decision that they need to make, do you feel that option two will, knowing that we want to get the kids back at Northeast, when it's safe, do you feel that option two with the EPA will get us there with the EPA?
I think option number, I think all the options could get you there. I think option number two gets you there with more space. Option number three gets you there with more space and a more pristine air distribution system, because you're using new duct as opposed to the area as the plenum there.
And is there the possibility that we could approve scenario two this evening, to move forward with the removal of the debris and the abatement work? And then pending the EPA approval, move, move to scenario three? Because are you saying that scenario three is, is optimal?
Thank you, Katie. That's what I was attempting to say.
Yeah, and I can weigh in, this is Rocco, I can weigh in, that as long as you do not install the intake duct, then there's no prohibition to waiting. I would certainly recommend the cleaning and the abatement occur in the shorter term, but you can always reinstall the duct work underneath the seats, as long as you don't install the intake. And we know from Scranton Electric that that's a few days of work to remain, so it doesn't abnormally hinder the length of the project. Now, I do not know the length of design and construction and fabrication for the individual ducts, that's $65,000.
I, I think, Rocco, that you just identified the thing I was forgetting, was that part of the discussions leading up to this evening was that piece about putting the installation of the duct work on hold. Because if we move forward with scenario two, remove, clean, abate, and then do that duct work, we have, for all intents and purposes, eliminated our ability to do option three at this price point.
So, correct, at this price point.
Okay, so we would be, we would be making a decision to move forward with the first two pieces, the removal of the debris and the abatement work, and put a hold on the installation of the duct work pending the EPA approval, at which point we could consider to do the whole nine yards, or simply move forward with the installation of the duct work. But, Dr. Kuchardi, are you hoping that the board would make the decision to take on scenario three pending EPA approval?
I think the EPA approval, because it's specific.
Make sure you get all the ice out.
May I, may I, not on the board or a member of the administration to please mute. Mrs. Orr, do you have the option of muting attendees? Yep, thank you very much. Okay, Dr. Kuchardi.
So, again, I think the EPA approval that you're looking for is an asbestos safety concern, specific to that toxic material. I think I would personally prefer, because it's more environmentally pristine, that option number three is implemented. This may be something that the environmental committee can talk about, because now you've got a more pristine airflow into the auditorium. I do not believe that there would be a difference in EPA approvals between two and three. Again, just to oversimplify, one gets you a segregated building, two gets you a segregated building and the auditorium for space, plus the older ventilation system, which does meet codes for now, and three gets you the auditorium and the school building and the, and the asbestos approvals and a more pristine ventilation system, because you're ducting it versus using the brick floors and walls as the, as the plenum.
So, may I follow up on that? This is Tara. Am I correct that if we decide to do option number two now, it's going to cost us a lot more if we then want to do option three?
No, I'll weigh in. So if you decided to do option two now, clean and abate, and then went into a holding pattern, it would completely depend on when you installed the intake duct, the part that you already paid for, that we just haven't put in place yet. That's the thing that clogs up the duct room. So you could absolutely execute option two, move forward to do the clean and abate, and then hold for EPA approval of the plan. And when you're ready to bring kids back in, you either move forward and install the intake duct at that point, four or five days theoretically, and you could start to occupy the building, or you move forward with the direct vent auditorium piece. You have some time, as long as you don't install the intake duct.
But to get the kids back in there, we need that intake duct, is that correct?
Yes, yes. That was the first piece that you approved last meeting. You need that in order to get the kids in the 1931 side.
Okay, so say we just did option two now, and eventually we get the kids back in there. Then if we wanted to put the, make the air pristine, as Dr. Kuchardi's saying, at that point, is it going to cost us more than $65,000?
Yes, absolutely, because you, essentially, I don't want to go back into sharing my screen, but you have to walk through the duct or take it all apart, the stuff that you just spent $32,000 to build and take it all out again.
Okay.
If we go, if we start right away with the clean and abatement, how soon can you start and how long will it take?
Paul may have more specific information, but I believe the cleaning is about four days, and the abatement is probably less than a week itself. So I would say in the two-week range, both of those vendors are deemed essential and are continuing to operate.
Correct. They said the cleaning was four to five days, and they said the abatement could be upwards of two weeks.
It's Roe here. I have a question for Dr. Finan. The difference in the option two, which puts us back to where the building has been for nearly 90 years, or option three is $65,000. Given that we spoke earlier with Mr. Barrett about the roof work that needs doing for Northeast and West Intermediate and South Scranton Intermediate and a lot of other things, what is your feeling about whether that $65,000 for the improvement in the air quality in the Northeast in auditorium is the best place to spend that $65,000? Or are there other places where you feel it may be better employed, given our current powerless financial state?
So, I think I uttered this comment a long time ago when I first arrived in the district. Many of your buildings are in deplorable condition, many. Many need a lot of work in the form of roofs, carpeting that's been torn and duct tape, et cetera, et cetera. Those of you who took this, the tours, understand some of, many of the issues that are in a lot of your buildings. When we speak about Northeast Intermediate School, whether or not, I think we've all agreed that we need to put children back into that school. To what extent we're going to put money into that school for the long term, I think is a decision that the board has to make, not tonight. I think what you're asked to do tonight is to make a choice between scenario two and scenario three. scenario three. I think I am a little concerned, if I were going before the EPA to present scenario two or scenario three, I would feel much more comfortable with scenario three. When I hear the word pristine air, that makes me feel a lot better for all those children who may have lung issues or asthma, et cetera, et cetera. I have a concern about that building as it exists. We know it needs a roof. We know the portico is falling apart, and we have to do work with that. There's a lot of work beyond what we're talking about. We are just talking about just simply abating the asbestos and cleaning it and cleaning the air. There's more that has to happen to that building if we want to make it into what I believe the children in that, that part of the community deserve. So, what we're talking about here is the difference of $65,000. I said earlier tonight, you don't have any money. You know that.
That's my concern.
However, however, if you wish to put children in that building, and you're a board member, and you want my advice, I don't know why you wouldn't go with the more pristine option. It's $65,000. Now, I'm not saying that's a lot of money, or it's not a lot of money. It is $65,000. But if I were going before the EPA, I would like to say, here's the best scenario that we have. This is our option. Because you're trying to retrofit a 1934 building. I mean, of course they don't have code for that. Of course they don't have code for a 19, I don't know if it's '04, '06 building. They don't have code for that, for children. So if you really want to make a good choice, you should make the one that's optimum for children. You know, am I spending your money? Yeah, you can, you can just discard what I'm saying, but I hear what Dr. Kachardi's saying, and I think if I were asked to go before the EPA, I'd want to give the optimal. Now, again, where do we get that money? Well, we talked earlier about some options that you have for savings at this point. We could find that money there. You still have a few dollars left in that capital reserve account that you could use for it, which is where we're taking the abatement money and the, the air testing and et cetera from. So we do have that money. Again, this is not going to fix that building per se for the children for 21st century learning. I think that's a bigger decision at this point.
And just for an estimate, how much do you think we would need to spend on that building to get it up to 21st century?
I'll tell you right now, I have an estimate, and it is a, an estimate, clear estimate from the architect I work with, $22 million. There it is, $22 million. That's a lot of money. Now, do I think you can afford that right now? No.
Dr. Finan-
Are you on the line? Yeah. I'm sorry, Katie.
That's okay. I was, I was going to ask Dr. Finan if she could address our needs in the medium term, shall we say, for that building. I think that's a very important point that the board needs to understand.
Yes. Again, you need a roof. You need to fix the portico. I don't have an estimate for the portico, okay? The classrooms, and when I talk about 21st century learning, I'm talking about being able to communicate and have technology that runs seamlessly, and I know it doesn't at this point. It also means modern, I mean, you've done a great job with making the auditorium look pretty, but we didn't ever fix things like HVAC systems, okay? So I would think that there's money that has to go into that. I do believe there are some other issues with the boilers. I'm not sure what they are, okay, at this point, but when I asked the architect who had looked at this, all your buildings, about five years ago, and I asked him to do an estimate, he did come around and look. He said, "22 million will just bring you up to today's standards." I don't even know if he meant 21st century classrooms. When I think classrooms, I think a lot better lighting, I think a lot better access to technology, where we talk about one-on-one learning for kids. That's what I'm talking about. So in the medium grade, I'm going to say 10 to 12 million might get you some of your systems in place. And again, you don't have that kind of money.
So I think I might just answer.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to keep stealing the mic here, but Dr. Finan, what I was also hoping you would address is that we do need this space for students. So I think it's important to note that when we're looking at a potential $95,000 investment, we're not making that for six months.
Right.
We are expecting, despite all of the things that you just described, to utilize this business for the, I don't want to say foreseeable future, because perhaps that's a little longer than I might think it is, but I, can you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, and I think that was, that was a question I was going to ask. Like, do you see this building, like, keeping it open in the next five, you know, five years?
Okay, so I think, I think, a couple points. Number one, there is capacity in your other two intermediate schools, as we've proven to you that there is capacity. It doesn't mean it's perfect, and there would have to be a lot of work done in both buildings if you wanted to continue just with two buildings. And I think Attorney Barrett brought that up at the beginning. Initially, when we looked at your whole district, we looked at only offering two intermediate schools. And I'm talking about the architects and engineers who worked prior to my coming to the district. When I look at your district, I also see a need for an intermediate school where it's located in the Northeast area. Is that building the right one? I'm not sure about that. But I will tell you, because I have built, I've done 28 building projects in my career, if you wish to tonight, to decide to build a new intermediate school, pretending you had the money, if you wish to do that, you would have to have the land available, and if you put a shovel in the ground tomorrow, under the best of conditions, you wouldn't occupy that for three and a half to five years, under the best of conditions. So you need a place for the children who are in that Northeast area to go to school. All right? I think, that being said, sure, are we housing them and are they learning? Yes. Is it optimal? No. Could we make some other decisions and move some more children into West Scranton High School where you have room? And I'm not talking sixth grade, of course, I'm talking maybe a special program that you pull off some of the children and send, do a special program there. All of those things have been looked at by our committee and talked about. But if today you want to house the children that come from Northeast Intermediate School, you need to bring that, you need to utilize the building that's there, because you really don't have optimal spaces in those other two places without putting money there. So when we're looking at, and again, it's not all that you're going to need to spend, but you don't have a place to put 833 kids tomorrow with, in, from that containment area, I'll call it a containment area. You don't have a place for that. So if you wish to remain and have three intermediate schools that service kind of a triangular section of your district, you need a school there. Maybe you don't need a school for 833. Maybe we can, and we have looked at the scenario of having it a bit smaller and pulling off some of those students to go to West Scranton or South, we can look at that. But I think, from my point of view, you're going to need to use that building. And I know people want to, want to tie me down to the two buildings that I said we should have that were in the recovery plan, but as I've looked at it, you need so much work at all your schools. Now we've put money into this one. If it means just a few more dollars to keep the kids there until you make a better and longer-term decision, that's what you need to do.
Okay. So, thank you, thank you.
Welcome.
So your recommendation would be going with option three, correct?
It is, only because I'm a little sensitive about pristine. The word pristine did it for me. When Dr. Kachardi said that, I know his background, I feel real comfortable with that. I just wanted to ask if Pat, I think he's on the line, if he would just address the capital improvement funds and if we've got that $95,000 in there to do that.
Yes, Ms. Yan, yes, we do. I'm going to give you an estimate of what the funds are available in the capital project fund. We're still performing the February bank reconciliations, but as of the end of January, there was approximately $5 million available in that fund. Obviously, we've had some expenditures through the month of February related to some of the environmental issues that we've had. So I would estimate that there's probably roughly, you know, $4.75 million to $5 million available in those funds.
Thanks, Pat.
Well.
Mr. Laffey, would you just clarify for the viewers at home that you did shut down your computer out of an abundance of caution, shall we say, and that's why you are sharing a screen right now from a safe distance? Am I correct?
We're maintaining our six, six feet distance, but yes, I had a technical difficulty and I shut down my computer for, to be cautious.
Thank you very much. Not to make light of the situation, but just to ensure that we're setting a good example. Thank you.
Do we have a running total yet as to how much the abatement works at Northeast of cost?
Well, I can give you what I have tracked so far. Now, obviously, the districts have been closed for a week, so if there's anything that has been invoiced from some of the vendors in the past week and a half, it has not been recorded, and I can only give you what I've received in my office process. But so far through, for Northeast that we have received in our office process, it's $132,290.
And this is the kind of expenditure that does come out of the capital reserve funds, just so you know. Not your general fund. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think if we have the money, we should do it, and we should do it right. And I think I'm leaning towards option three, to be honest with you.
I figure if we're in the apocalypse, we might as well go out with verve clacoe as cheap champagne.
But do, do we want to consider option three with that friendly amendment, that the work to actually install the individual ducts would be done pending the EPA concurrence? That we are committing to take it on this evening, but we're not going to start work tomorrow and incur that cost? We are going to give it some time to see if we hear from the EPA.
I think that would be a decent middle ground.
I think that, that makes sense, Katie.
Let's not forget that, we don't want to say pending concurrence only, correct? We also wanted to say-
Totally.
Yes.
Pending concurrence, not to be too colloquial, unless we don't hear from you.
Right. I mean, how, Jimmy, perhaps you would make the friendly amendment to include that? Because I think we are, we do want to get that, not to give you a chore there, but-
All right. I probably should write something down first, right?
Yes, if you want to think about that for a few seconds, because then we, we do actually, if this, if we are going with option three with the friendly amendment, we do need to ask Director Hume to read this. So is there anything else anyone would like to discuss on this topic at this time? Of course, we'll still have on the questions.
I would like to ask for direction, because if we do go with option three, obviously there's some design components and manufacturing components that Scranton Electric would be doing. So do I not have them do the design piece? Because I'm sure there's a cost just associated with the design piece out of the $65,000 until we hear back potentially from the EPA.
I, I am concerned that if we do all this and we wait on this, that, you know, I mean, my personal feeling is we're not going to be reopened this school year. My personal feeling is that, that there's, once the bodies start falling around the country, schools all over the country are probably going to be canceled. But suppose we were to go with option scenario three, and we're still waiting for an EPA thing when the schools are reopened, we are still even then postponing the return of the children? My feeling is we're either, if we're going to be waiting five years, you know, even were we shovel ready, Dr. Finan says it would be five years were we to even consider moving out of this school. My feeling is, is that we should just bite the bullet and go ahead with it. And then, when it's ready, the school is ready to reopen, we can move back into it. The worst-case scenario would be if we delayed this, then we got permission to reopen the schools, but we still weren't in a position to put the children back. I don't know, I'm, I'm very conflicted about this. I personally think that if we are going to go ahead with it, we should move ahead and do it, because, because otherwise, it could well be the awful situation that we're allowed to reopen in April, but we've still got the kids out, whereas if we went ahead with it, we could have put the kids back.
I think Roe makes a good point.
It could be done at some time anyway.
Roe, you make a very good point, and I-
Yeah, I think it's-
I'm confident Dr. Doherty would not have recommended something that, he did not think was safe and, and would be approved by the EPA, if that is even a thing. He would not have made that recommendation. Is that correct, Doctor?
Could you say that again?
Sure. I mean, you would not have, you would not have made option three a recommendation if you did not think that it addressed the problem, made it safe for the children to return, and, and would be likely to be approved by the EPA if approval by the EPA is required or is even a thing.
That's correct, definitely.
I mean, my belief is we should move ahead with the work, because whether we do it now or whether we do it later on, it's going to have to be done before kids go back into the school, whether they go back in August or whether they go back in April. And it's really, we're gambling, I think it's a no-brainer that we do option two, because that's got to be done. I wouldn't want anybody over all that crap and junk anyway. But whether, if we're going to decide that option three is the pristine and optimum thing, I think we should just go ahead and do it, because we're going to have the school for that long. If that's what people want to do, I think we should do it.
I agree.
I can't see any point of running the risk of not having the school ready. Now, having said that, I'm also a great believer that we're not going to get back into the schools this year, but who knows?
Sean, did you have something you were going to say?
No, I just think we, we at least start with it, and then we seek, we go for the approval, and again, if we get it, we get it. If not, if they don't answer us, then we go ahead and finish the rest of it. But if we're going to have this building for a while, and we know that, we need to, you know, I think we need to do this right. And if it's pristine air, I think that's the, the right way to do it for the health and everybody.
And I think what Mr. Doherty was attempting to do there was, we're going to move ahead with scenario number three, we're going to put in a friendly amendment, but what Mr. Doherty wanted was, he was moving ahead with the design phase, maybe to put another little check in there before we moved ahead with the full project.
Yeah, obviously, because it's going to take some significant design, I would think, to, to run it, because I think there's about 170 ducts that have to be run individually.
There are.
And obviously, there's some significant design that would go into that, so I don't want to engage Scranton Electric if then we don't get EPA approval. So, I mean, if we just move ahead with the project, I mean, nothing would make me happier than to green light everybody involved with it. But if there is a stipulation involving, you know, we don't want to move ahead with that piece unless there's EPA approval, I don't see how I could even engage Scranton Electric to start the design phase of that.
But, but the bellwork, the scenario three or scenario two, as, as Dr. Kachardi said, it doesn't matter to the EPA whichever one we choose. So we might as well go big or go home and, and get it done. So we might as well go big or go home and get it done, because somehow or other we're going to have to get that building open. And if this is something that needs to be done, let's do it. I just don't see the point in, were we feeling that holding off on the, we have to do, we have to do option two, scenario two anyway, because we've got to get that work abated, we've got to get that rubbish out of there. I think that seems fairly obvious to me. But as it makes no difference to EPA approval, whether we're doing scenario two or scenario three, but it does make a difference to the timeline of the possibility of getting the kids back in there. And it does make a difference to the fact that we want to do the best, or we may vote to do scenario three and do the best with the pristine air. I don't see what halfway hedging our bets does. I just don't see.
I agree, Row. I agree.
I agree.
Rowism, yes, go big or go home, right, Row?
It's my feeling about it. I mean, Dr., my initial reading of this was that I was in favor of scenario two and not in favor of scenario three. Yet again, Dr. Fine and you have persuaded me. But in that case, this is, we can't run the risk of just delaying getting back in there. And even if we are shut for the whole of the rest of this school year, well, at least we've got, we'll be ready to go at the next school year.
Right. I think what Mr. Doherty was saying, though, was approve the design work, get that design work done, get this process started. I mean, scenario number two is going to take some time. And then the design work is going to take some time. And I mean, within that, we're going to be two weeks to our next meeting. I don't think they're saying stop any of the work, I'm saying the design work must be approved.
Oh, absolutely, but if we approve scenario three, he can go ahead and get the design work and spend that money. And then if it turns out we don't need to spend any more money, we just don't spend any more money. I think we learned last meeting where we went ahead with the option of rebating the 1931 building, but not the auditorium, that we cost ourselves time. Now, it hasn't, as it turns out, due to unfortunate little viruses, cost us time about getting the kids back in. But I think what I've learned is that if we approve this, we can then go ahead and get the design work done. Then, if it turns out that that money's been wasted, because we're not losing more time. And I feel that we really just need to bite the bullet and plow ahead, is my feeling. I don't know how others feel.
I agree. And that's not just because I don't think that would, I think that means I don't have to do anything to the proposal as it is already written out. I was, I'm not just.
Sure. What I was going to say is, I mean, it seems as though I am hearing consensus that we would like to move to reading E1, option three, that is outlined here in our packets. Would we like to make the friendly amendment drafted by Mr. Malloy? And vote that up or down, would we like to hear that? Or do we simply want to move forward with option number three as is?
I'd like to hear Director Malloy's friendly amendment.
Same, probably finish writing it then.
Okay.
Mr. Doherty?
Things that I think we can commit to very easily, while you're formulating the amendment there, is that I'll continue our discussions with our friends at the EPA, who we have a very collegial relationship with. And if there is anything negative that comes out of those discussions from a technical, safety, hygiene, design standpoint, certainly let you guys know about that in the short term, the short term being weeks, not, you know, months down the line. So that you know you're moving in the right direction, or you at least have as much information as we do. Again, this is, there's not a offensive defensive relationship with the EPA here, with you or with us here. So I think we can track this as it moves forward and give you any information that we find out. And like, as I said, in the short term versus the official letter, which is the longer term.
Sounds great.
I think that makes a lot of sense. So I think if Dr. Kachardi could just reply back to us as he has these communications with EPA and let us know if we're on track, I think that's perfect.
Yeah, and if the board makes a decision one way or another, I'll put that in an email tonight before I leave and make sure it's on the email for the EPA guys, so they're aware. And that awareness, if that awareness generates any discussion technically, I'll certainly let everybody know right away.
Thank you.
Mr. Doherty?
Yes?
John, I just as an ex, do we want to vote on?
I appreciate it, thank you.
And then the second one as well? Or do we just want to vote on one of them? Because the first one gives us a specific, sorry, the first one gives us a specific approval to do scenario two, but it isn't contradicted by option three?
I think it is.
Is it?
My understanding is if we're going to do option three, we need to know now, so we don't put that vent in and close off that airway.
Okay, so we need to vote just on the one, just on the one?
I think we need to take the, make the pick between two and three tonight, because otherwise, it would cost us a lot more money to undo number two to get to number three.
Okay, so do we just ignore number two and vote on number three?
John, do you have the resolutions in front of you? That's the question Row is asking. Not about two different scenarios, but about two different versions of the resolution.
I have, I did, but I moved off to go to the, let me find them. These are the ones that Ginny sent us?
Yes.
That's the PowerPoint, so that's not what we want.
The attachment says board packet, I believe.
Here it is. Board packet, okay, so E1.
While you're reading that, can I ask Dr. Kachardi a question?
Certainly.
Dr. Kachardi, you may have mentioned this, but my internet was going in and out. Are we going to be able to fit all of the students back in to that one side?
The short story is yes. I, based upon whether you make classrooms out of the library or some of the workshop spaces, that number is going to change up or down oh, by about 20 or 30 people. But total occupancy is going to be right around 1,000.
Okay. Thank you.
I think that what we can do is just put a motion up for the resolution of option E1, option three. I don't think we need to read into the record option two.
Don't need to vote it down?
I don't, no, I don't think so.
All right.
We could vote up option three.
Jimmy, you seem to have put your pencil down, so.
I got something.
Okay.
I was kind of hoping, I was kind of hoping John would say, I don't think we need the friendly amendment, but he didn't say that.
So, we may read this resolution. Mr. Malloy can offer his friendly amendment. If it gets a second, we can vote yea or nay on the friendly amendment. If that's yea, then we can go forward, passing the resolution, approving or not the resolution with the friendly amendment. If it's nay, we would simply go forward with the resolution as written. We would vote to go forward with the resolution.
Vote to go forward with it as written.
Okay, does anyone have anything else for the good of the order?
We want to go.
Right, so I have a friendly amendment?
We're going to do it on the, with the resolution.
We will do the amendment with the resolution, is that okay?
Okay.
Okay. Director Hume, take it away, you're on.
To the members of the Board of School Directors of the City of Scranton, it is the recommendation of the superintendent and the operations committee that the following resolution is approved. Whereas, after recommendations and options presented by Kachardi and associates, the Scranton School Board hereby approves the following project at Northeast Intermediate School. Removal of debris under the auditorium and the abatement of all asbestos containing material from the area under the auditorium. And install individual ducts run to each vent of the auditorium at a cost not to exceed $95,000, respectfully submitted.
Okay, I have a friendly amendment to add?
Thank you.
Will I proceed?
Please, Mr. Doherty, do I need a second on the resolution before the friendly amendment?
Back in on the resolution.
Okay, and then?
Second.
Sean, second?
Yep.
Okay, Mr. Malloy, your friendly amendment, please.
Thank you, Madam President. My friendly amendment is to insert after the number 95,000 at the end of the proposal, pending approval and/or concurrence by the Environmental Protection Agency, reserving the right to proceed without said approval and/or occurrence as of June 15, 2020. That's what I got.
On the amendment?
Do I have a second for me?
I will second it.
Okay.
Does that conclude us working on the removal of debris and everything else? Does that amendment preclude the first stage of the work taking place?
It doesn't. I don't think so.
I think it does. Inserted at the end, does it, perhaps? Should it be inserted between the word install an individual? Does that make it more clear?
That, if it was inserted there, that would be different, but otherwise, if we pass that as stated, it would mean we couldn't move ahead with the removal of the the removal of a thing and asbestos.
It's included.
It would preclude us.
I understand what, I see what you're saying, Row, Jimmy, do you?
I don't, I just, because I, it's just, if I'm looking at the same thing that Row just read, it looks like it's just one sentence.
And I think that's the concern. I think what Row is saying is that the amendment added to the end of the sentence would cover every item in the sentence if it is inserted after the word install. You are installing, we're doing the other work, but we're installing pending the EPA approval or concurrence, the individual ducts.
Okay, then, my friendly amendment, I'd like to amend my friendly amendment.
In an unfriendly manner?
To insert the same language that I just read after, which word?
The word install.
The word install.
Okay.
Sorry about that, but it would be.
No, I, very good, I think it's a good.
Could we, am I on? Yeah.
Yes.
Could we maybe read that sentence? So everyone understands it, because an easier way would be, with all due respect, just to put a second sentence to say that the installation of individual ducts will be contingent upon. But if it reads smoothly, that we could all understand it, that's fine, but I'm not sure how it reads.
No, you're right, it should be, it should be a separate sentence. I was, I felt constrained about how much I could mess with the, with the language as was there and whether or not I could add another sentence. So, you're absolutely right, it works better as a second sentence.
So third time's a charm, aren't we saying?
I'd like to, I'd like to think so. Let's see.
Want me to suggest that, I could suggest that it would read, the last sentence would read, the installation of individual ducts to run to each vent of the auditorium and not exceed a cost of 95,000 will be contingent upon whatever your language was.
The approval and/or concurrence of the EPA, while at the same time reserving the right to proceed without said approval or concurrent as of June 15, 2020.
Can I just suggest someone emails that to Ginny, because I'm.
Yes, please.
Attempt to repeat it.
And I second that friendly amendment.
So may I have a roll call, please? Well, any, on the question of the amendment?
On the question of the amendment, do we have any guidance from the state in regards to Governor Wolf's reimbursement on the remediation work? Just to make sure that we're getting all the correct documentation of everything that we're doing to submit to the state later on.
Are you talking about the, what we will have to apply for, Tom?
Yes.
Yeah, no, we have not, we haven't gotten any direction on that at all.
Okay, but we have everything compiled to submit that when it's time?
I believe that's the running document that Pat has, that he, that he has shared with the board.
Okay, do we think that we need to get any kind of direction on any of that? Just so we make sure as we're going through this, we have everything in order?
Well, yes, but I believe that's going to be in the governor's budget, which isn't even out yet. So I don't.
R cap?
Yeah, R cap, yeah.
And that's competitive money. So I'm not sure we can, you know, I think we have to apply, but I'm not sure that we will receive it. I mean, it's not like it's going to be a guarantee, it's for businesses as well. And given the current situation, there may be businesses that are more needy than schools at this point.
Yeah, I'm just making sure if we have clarification on what types of documentation we need for that.
No.
Going forward.
I have not received any documentation as far as what that is. And I was actually at that presentation and they, his assistant, I apologize, I forget his name, said that they would be forwarding things out, but we have not received any of that yet. But I don't think they can send it out yet, because they don't even know if it's going to get approved in his budget.
But I think what Mr. Schuster is saying, just based on general R cap experience here, are we keeping track of the documentation that we may need? Even if we're not getting guidance, just in general, do we feel as though, like, we aren't going to look back and say, oh, we should have had a breakdown of X, Y, or Z? We're just keeping that in mind as we move through this process?
Given what's likely to happen to state budgets after this last month, I would be very surprised if that fund ever saw the light of day, to be honest.
Right.
And I'm just saying, keep it in mind.
Yes, understood. And I believe that our record keeping is much better than it has been. And everybody knows how I feel, that everything should be online and electronic. So that's where we're moving towards. I believe Pat is keeping documentation in a spreadsheet along with all of the bills. Paul has all of the bids. And so, from my standpoint, yes, I think we're doing a good job of tracking that. What exactly, the R cap exactly has to have, we will look into that, because I don't think anybody knows. We don't have any experience with that, but we will look into that definitely.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So, any more on the question of the friendly amendment? Mrs. Orr, may I have a roll call, please? Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Hugh?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Well, can I vote no against my own friendly amendment?
Of course, you can.
I'm going to vote no.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Gilmartin?
Yes.
Eight affirmative, one negative, motion passes. And now, do we have anything on the question of the resolution? Mrs. Orr, may I have a roll call, please? Ms. Fox?
Yes, sorry.
That's okay. Ms. Hugh?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Gilmartin?
Yes.
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
Thank you very much, everybody. And now, I believe, Mr. Schuster, we have a personnel resolution?
Yes, to the members of the Board of School Directors of the City of Scranton, it is a recommendation of the Personnel Committee that the attached list of appointments, assignments, resignations, leaves of absences, and professional contracts is approved. Appointments are effective upon receipt of proper criminal records, immigration, and medical and child abuse reports. Salaries are in accordance with the collective bargaining agreements, respectfully submitted.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes. Yes.
Mrs. Orr, on the question, pardon me, on the question? Mrs. Orr, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Hugh?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Nine affirmative, thank you.
I don't believe we have any other business on our agenda this evening. Make sure I'm not forgetting something. I just would like to thank everyone for bearing with our technology, as interesting as it was this evening.
Like Rosemary's accent.
I'm sorry?
Rosemary, she's very happy.
Oh, good, you're excited, wonderful. I, I have to say, in, in light of the current circumstances, it was a pleasure to be with you all this evening. I miss you all a great deal. I hope everyone is staying well, and staying calm, and home, and six feet apart from one another. I'm looking at you gentlemen in that office there. But it, I appreciate you all bearing with us tonight and sticking through this, this long discussion. And I think we're, we're doing the very best we can to make sure that all the important business that goes on day in and day out in the district is being managed while we are all dealing with this really unbelievable set of circumstances. And I, it just, I, I hope any of you who have children in our district or are in communication with our students, please let them know that they are in our thoughts as well. And I, I can't tell you how, every day, my heart breaks for the things that, that these kids are, are missing out on and the experiences that they are not going to, to get to, to experience. And I, as we're all dealing with the business of all of this and trying to make good decisions and be patient and responsible as we, we move through this difficult process, I, I hope not one of them ever thinks that, that the loss they are all suffering is lost on any of us. So with that, please stay well, and we'll see you back here on the interwebs next Monday night at 5:30. Thank you very much, may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Make a motion.
Second?
It's all seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, good night, everybody. Take care.
Good night.
Night.